Meeting to order. First, I'd like to everyone stand for the invocation by Dylan and the pledge allegiance by Vice Chair Van Meter.
Pray tonight at night. Home, pray that you would guide our local lead leader present here. Guidance for all. Pray that you would continue safety to all the first responders here in the community to help the community.
Yeah. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public, for which it stands. God, justice for all.
Okay, we have a quorum tonight sent here. I need to get approval of the minutes from the previous meeting February 6, 2025.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting of February 6, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. I need approval for the agenda for tonight's.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to change the.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor? Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on March 4, 2025. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller. To obtain a request to speak for them, any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of 10 minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Let's get into our new business. Our new business, the first on the list here, preliminary plat, Abundance Point. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for Abundance Point located on Abundance Way. This is quite a ways off Mistletoe Road down a road known as Camper Club Road. You can see it located here out on the lake. It is currently zoned R4 recreational residential. And the proposal is to develop nine single-family lots on this property with a minimum lot size of 40,006 square feet and an average lot size of 68,978 square feet. This does meet the requirements for the R4 zoning district. Setbacks are required to be 55 feet from the center line of the private road that you see providing access to these lots and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. There's 6.6 acres of open space in this development, including a horticultural area and a clubhouse. One unique aspect of this plat is that in order to subdivide this property, they have to provide access via an improved road. The subdivision plan includes as phase one, the improvement of Camper Club Road, including paving it and dedication of right-of-way. A portion of it to be public, a portion of it to be private, but right-of-way for the entire road and paving of that road to provide access for the subdivision. And staff is recommending approval.
Okay, Abundance Point. Staff recommends approval. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Abundance Point.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Danielle, again, Greenpoint Phase Four.
Yes, sir. This is the preliminary plat for Phase Four of Greenpoint Subdivision located off Appling Harlem Road. This is on kind of the north section of the Greenpoint PRD planned residential development. And it includes 62 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet and an average lot size of 8,119 square feet, which does meet the requirements set forth in the PRD zoning. The minimum setback is 25 feet from the right-of-way, seven and a half feet from the side property lines, and 10 feet from the rear property lines. There will be sidewalks and street trees on both sides of the road, and you can see the 50-foot buffer provided against the adjacent property. Per the zoning conditions, this development can have no more than 300 lots final platted until a second full access is provided for the development. This preliminary plat does bring the development to over 300 lots, but you can see the connection to Holcombe Road here as part of this preliminary plat that will provide that connection out to Wrightsboro Road, meeting that zoning condition. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay, Greenpoint Phase Four. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Greenpoint Phase Four off Appling Harlem Road.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and second it. All those in favor? Motion carries. Tiller Park Area Seven.
Yes, sir. This is the preliminary plat for Area Seven of Tillery Park off Baker Place Road. This section is kind of on the west side of Baker Place Road, the majority of Tillery Park being on the east side, and it is currently zoned planned residential development. This section includes 98 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet and an average lot size of 7,249 square feet, which meets the requirements of the PRD. The minimum setback requirements for this property are 18 feet from the right-of-way where the water line is present, 15 feet where it's not. Seven and a half foot side setbacks in most cases, although the estate lots on this side of the road are required to have 10-foot side setbacks. And the 10-foot rear setbacks will apply to all of the lots. There's 14.41 acres of open space in this section, including the buffer areas. And this does include the active park in the center of the development, which is intended to be developed with playground equipment. This PRD also has a condition similar to that from Greenpoint that requires second access to the development before final plating of 300 lots. Previous preliminary plots have already put this development over 300 lots that have essentially construction plans approved. So while they can get preliminary plat approval for this section to begin the infrastructure construction, they will not be able to get final plat approval until that condition is met. With that caveat, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat.
Okay, we have a plat, Tiller Park Area Seven. Staff recommends approval. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, Tiller Park Area Seven off Baker Place Road.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor and second it. All those in favor? We have an architectural review condition of rezoning. History.
Yes, sir. This is a location at 5151 Bluegrass Trail. It's on C2, and it's for the new Mavis Tire and Brake Store, and it's for compliance with the rezoning condition. Here's the location, which is on the left side of Dock's porch side. And the zoning is C2. This is the close-up of the aerial. There is part of a parking lot on there right now, and that's going to change with a new site plan that's submitted. And this is the plan, and the building is facing this way. Overhead doors facing this way on the parking lot side. These are the proposed elevations. They have brick and stone and some glazed overhead doors. These are the end elevations. And these are just examples of the store, just to give us an idea of what it will look like. And these are the proposed materials that were submitted. And staff is recommending approval.
For architectural review condition of rezoning, staff recommends approval. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the review of the structural design at Mavis Tire Bluegrass Foot Trail.
Second. I have a motion on the floor and duly seconded. Do I have all those in favor? Raise your hand. Motion carries. It's time for our public hearing temporary use authorization. First, on the sheet here, 1242 Lakeview Drive.
Yes, so this is a TUA application at 1242 Lakeview Drive. Zoning is RA residential agriculture. It's for a temporary use for a travel trailer. This is the location on the map, which is RA. And this is the aerial of the existing house on the property. Proposed location of the trailer will be behind the house, and the family's going to live there while they remodel the existing house. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay, the owner-applicant, 1242 Lakeview Drive. Would you like to come forward and speak? One else? Please state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Currently living at 1246 Lakeview Drive, which is other property right next door to this.
Have any questions for? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this temporary use authorization? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak against this temporary use authorization? Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization at 1242 Lakeview Drive.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and duly seconded. All those in favor? Motion carries. I have a variance to Section 90-135. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to Section 90-135, which is our sign code regarding canopy signage for the property at 5170 Columbia Road. This property is at the intersection of Columbia Road and Lewiston Road in the southeast quadrant of that intersection and is currently zoned C2 general commercial. This property has been under construction for a while for a Parker's gas station. You can see that has been completed on the site. And this application is in regards to signage for the gas canopy itself, specifically for the sign labeled as Canopy A here on the plan. The applicants have requested to withdraw this application at this time, but essentially they were requesting additional square footage for that canopy sign. They have several other signs on the property, as you can see here. So the gas station is fairly well identified even without a canopy sign. And this was the proposed canopy sign, about 36 square feet. County code allows that sign to be 12 square feet. That was the basis for the variance request. This is the other location down at Gateway that did get that canopy sign variance approved, so that's what that.
so that's what that canopy sign looks like in real life, that they were requesting at this site, and where it would be on this particular canopy. Just existing views of the site. And again, they are requesting to withdraw the request at this time, and staff is recommending accepting that withdrawal.
Okay, will the owner, Drayton Parker Companies LLC, or applicant, anchor signs, would like to come forward and speak on behalf? Please state your name and your address.
Jackson 171 Crossroads Parkway. Withdraw the application.
Okay. Questions? Any other?
Thank you.
Any other members of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this withdrawal? Any member would like to speak against this withdrawal? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice of file VA25-02-01, variance to Section 90-135, permit of one larger canopy sign at 5170 Columbia Road.
Second. I have a motion on the floor and duly second. All those in favor? Motion carries. I have a variance to Section 90-135, signs again on Jimmy Dyess Parkway. Mystery?
Yes, sir. This is a similar request at 4099 Jimmy Dyess Parkway for another gas station, Parker's Gas Station. This is the location right off the interstate. And this is the zoning for C2. It is in the corridor protection overlay district by the hatch on the plan. And this is the aerial of the previous gas station that was a Valero brand, and that's been demolished as a plat. These are the site views before it was demolished. And in 2018, they did have canopy signs permitted, and they were the 12 square feet allowed by code. And this is the site photograph, which is under construction, and the approved site plan as well. The building already has permits for three wall signs and two freestanding signs, and this request is also for an increase in canopy signage at 36 square feet. These are the, the wall signs are permitted and the freestanding signs. This is the 36 square feet requested. Are we measured that with rectangle? Again, with the same as Columbia Road, the applicant has requested to withdraw this application.
Okay, we have a variance again, 90-135, signs. Would you like to speak in favor of this withdrawal?
Is there EU prejudice?
Anyone else in the audience would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak against this withdrawal? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice, variance 90-135.
Second. I have a motion on the floor and duly second. All those in favor? Will we have a variance on 90-98?
The chair's request for a variance, Section 90-98, lists a lot of search requirements to remove the maximum front setback along Roundtree Way, property located at 531 Roundtree Way, about three acres, currently zoned C2. This location of the property, again, it's going to look a little different here in a minute. Again, currently zoned C2, ID of some R2 adjacent to it, then some AR across the street and some plenty of development. There's generally the view of the site, and it is only part of the property. It is currently under construction for a ray-race car wash. And it shows the plan. This is what we're looking to remove the maximum setback to basically get rid of. So this piece of property is within the Evans Town Center Overlay District. It has a minimum and maximum setback. You can see the five-foot MBL here. Actually, if we go to the next slide, that'll be easier to explain. All right. We have the five-foot MBL here. That's your minimum setback, and then the max is the red one on both sides. This property has a little bit of history. It was requested to be rezoned with variances twice on the first initial submittal. They requested to reduce the maximum setback on both Riverwatch Parkway and Roundtree Way, along with several other variances. When it got to BOC, they said, "There's too many variances," and so they disapproved all of it. Now, staff at that time had said, "We're okay with reducing the, or getting rid of the maximum setback on Roundtree Way," because again, we have two frontages, kind of hard to fit everything where you're touching both of these areas essentially. But they did, they were able to make it work on Riverwatch. So they came back on second time. They provided this supplies building to meet that max setback again, is within the envelope that is created there. They're now being asked to, can we remove the max setback to get rid of that supplies building? It's not really of use to us. And again, staff has no real issues of doing that. Again, our opinion has not changed from the initial that was put there to basically meet a requirement and also get rid of a variance on a previous request. However, staff does have a condition, requested that the maximum building setback is removed from Roundtree Way only, and keeping it on Riverwatch is preferred in this situation. That includes staff recommendation.
Will the owner, Ray America LLC, or applicant Gary Simpson, would like to come forward and speak on behalf of this request? Speak your name and your address, please.
Gary Simpson, 334 Holly Oak Way, Grove Town. Like Will said, we were trying to check all the boxes when we're trying to get approval. Since then, the general contractor, different people, it's like, "Why are you putting a storage building out by the road?" And so we were like, "Hey, let's see if we can get the variance now to get out of it." Evans Town Center, it's going to look odd with a storage building out by the road.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Any member of the audience would like to speak for this approval with condition? Any member would like to speak against this approval with condition? Okay, I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve with condition 2502.
Second. I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor? Raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, we have another variance of 90-135, signs. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to Section 90-135, signs at 208 Bobby Jones Expressway. This is in regards to a billboard this time instead of canopy signage. The property is located on the east side of Bobby Jones Expressway, near the intersection with Rose Lane, and is currently zoned C2 general commercial, as are all of the immediately adjacent properties. The application is in regards to an existing billboard. These two properties, 208 and 210, are intended to be redeveloped together, and as part of that redevelopment, they are proposing to relocate this existing billboard. Now, the existing billboard is a non-conforming use. It is within 500 feet of an existing billboard, and our code does have minimum separation requirements of 500 feet between billboards. Essentially, when that billboard comes down and then has to be put back up, the reconstruction of that billboard is required to meet county code. So that is the basis for this variance request, is their new location is also within 500 feet of an existing billboard, although a different one than they are currently near. So this shows the existing site and the existing billboard. And the existing sign locations, you can see this is the billboard we're dealing with. There's an existing billboard on the opposite side of Bobby Jones. That is the one that they are close to at the moment with the existing location. And then there's an existing billboard up at the intersection with Washington Road, which will come into play with the relocation. So this is the proposed site plan. It is in other Parker's. This is the poll for the billboard sign relocation, an idea of where that is intended to be. And you can see from the graphic here that while in that location, they're now over 500 feet from the billboard on the opposite side of Bobby Jones, they are just over 400 feet from the one on Washington Road, so that does not meet the county code as far as the separation requirements. Now, the intent of that section of the code is to kind of bring uses into conformance with the code over time. That's why we require reconstruction to meet current codes instead of allowing it to go back as it was if it was not in compliance. So the, allowing the variance kind of doesn't allow that process to happen. Additionally, there is a code-compliant location for the billboard on this property. They do have to slide it further east on the site, so it's not their ideal location, but there is a location on this property where they can meet the 500-foot separation from both of those billboards. Due to those reasons, staff is recommending disapproval of the variance request.
Okay, will the owner applicant of Community Bank, John H. Famon Trust, like to come forward and speak in favor of this?
Hey, Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering. I'm the civil engineer of record on this project. So we've covered it pretty much, right, with that introduction, which was great. I appreciate that. We've got a non-conforming use. We are asking for the variance to allow it to remain non-conforming. Now, we do realize, obviously, the reason for the ordinance is to correct non-conformities when possible, and that's not when convenient, but when possible. So in this case, and we do have Parker's here, we've got Lamar here, who's the sign company that owns that sign, and then we've also got a real estate representation. The problem with the location that's proposed that does meet is that the people, the company that owns the sign, that does not work for them. Parker's also would rather not put it back there behind their building. You saw the construction of it. It is one of the cantilevered signs that, I wish there was a better picture of it right there, but either way, it would be overhanging towards the building. Of course, it's built right now, hanging over a building, not great in its current state. But therein lies really the request, right? We realize it is a non-conformity, and we understand the ordinance is there to make that change happen when possible. And it's not that it's not technically possible here, but with the regulations from the sign company, as well as, of course, the wishes of Parker's, it would not, it would not work. They cannot come to an agreement on the location of that sign in that location.
Questions? Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have any questions. We're good. Thank you. Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak approval of this? I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend this approval of file VA25-02-04, variance to Section 90-135 to permit a billboard to be constructed on the property at 208 Bobby Jones Expressway within 500 feet of an existing billboard.
I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor of this approval? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. I have a rezoning from R2. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning to PRD planned residential development for the properties at 4204 Washington Road. These properties are located on the southwest side of Washington Road across from Mullins Crossing and are currently zoned R2 single-family residential. There is R2 zoning to both the east and west of them, and then the existing apartment complex to the north, and the S1 zoning to the south for Washington Commons, which is also essentially a high-density residential development. The properties are, currently have a house on the smaller piece, and the larger property is undeveloped. And this is a photo of the existing site. And the proposal is to develop 123 attached and detached cottages on this property. They would range from one to three bedrooms and one to two stories and would essentially all be rental units. They would not be subdivided on individual lots. Conceptually, as I said, it is in between two other higher-density developments between the apartment complex and Washington Commons. It is most likely going to be connected to the apartment complex as far as access to the site. There's significant floodplain along Washington Road that does make that connection difficult. That is part of what we are waiting on is some additional information from the applicants as far as how they're actually going to develop the site. But in terms of kind of what they're proposing development-wise, here's some examples of the cottages themselves. They are all oriented around kind of shared green space courtyards with the intent of providing that common outdoor space for all of the units. And in terms of future land use, this is at the edge of the Evans Activity Center. This is the Activity Center in the light blue. This property is classified in the neighborhood's character area, but with kind of where it's located between these two higher-density uses, it does make sense to allow the expansion of that character area of the Activity Center to include this property. So again, from a strictly use perspective, density perspective, this makes some sense. Where we do have some concerns are with the actual engineering and construction design of this site, particularly in regards to access and fire code and fire department requirements. Those have been relayed to the applicants, and they are working through those concerns, and they have requested to postpone this application to give them time to address those issues. So we are recommending postponing this application. The applicants have requested the March 20th Planning Commission meeting to come back with some additional information.
Would the owner, CL Gray Enterprises, or the applicant, Brightside Homes, would like to come forward and speak in favor of this postponement? Anyone else would like to speak in favor of this? Any would like to speak against this? Do I have a motion on the floor for postponement?
I make a motion to postpone the rezoning from R2 to PRD, 4204 Washington Road.
Second. I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Just to clarify, we do need a date in that motion for which meeting we're postponing to.
The March 20th.
Oh. Tell you March 20th?
March 20th. Postponement to March 20th.
Okay. Apologize. So postponement to March 20th?
Uh huh.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand for postponement. Motion carries. Okay, we have a rezoning from R2 to R1. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning from R2 to R1 off Wrightsboro Road and Hamilton Road. Both of these are single-family residential zoning districts. The differences lie in the minimum lot size requirement and the fact that R2 requires a sewer connection, while R1 will allow development on septic systems. This is the location of the property on the south side of Wrightsboro Road across from Baker Place Road, and it is currently zoned R2 per a rezoning that was approved back in 2020. You can see adjacent properties are primarily zoned RA, residential agricultural, and it is currently an undeveloped property. See from the existing site photo as well. And the intent of this rezoning was to essentially decrease the density of the development proposed on the property to allow development on septic systems. That has run into some potential issues with the soil survey and permitting of the septic systems through the Health Department, so the applicants at this time have requested to withdraw this application. In terms of future development map, this is in the neighborhood's character area, so the single-family residential use is generally appropriate, but we are accepting, are requesting, recommending accepting the request to withdraw.
Would the owners, Jack and Mary, Michael Moxley or Mark Durth, as co-trustees, would like to come forward, or applicant Tyler Finley would like to come forward and speak in favor of this withdrawal? One else would like to come forward and speak in favor? Anyone against? Yes. Okay. All right. I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice of file RZ25-02-02, rezoning from R2 to R1 off Wrightsboro Road.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. We have a concept plan, Hamilton Grove. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, sir, and if it's acceptable, we'll go ahead and do the concept and the variance together since they are related items. So this is the concept plan that was submitted with Hamilton Grove. As we saw, they are requesting to withdraw the rezoning request, so they are also requesting to withdraw the concept plan and the associated variance. Again, this property is located on the south side of Wrightsboro Road, and they were requesting the rezoning to R1 for the larger lots on septic. So you can see one new road proposed with that, and then some lots having frontage on Hamilton Road. Again, this ran into some potential issues with the soil survey and getting actual septic permitting from the Health Department. See from the soil survey here, what you're looking for, what they want to have are white soil colors on that map. The blue and red are somewhere between marginal and completely unsuitable, so you can see most of the property doesn't really meet what you're looking for with an initial soil survey. The Health Department requested some more detailed information to really be able to review this, but at this time, they are requesting to withdraw these applications. but at this time, they are requesting to withdraw these applications. The variance request was related to that requested concept plan and is in regards to the cul-de-sac length for the new road. Again, same property we're looking at. The cul-de-sac length for that new road is a little over twenty-two hundred feet. County code does limit it to seven hundred feet, which is why we had the related variance request. But again, we're recommending accepting the withdrawal of these applications.
Okay. So there's no public hearing for the concept plan or variance? Is that correct? Variance, so the variance we have to have. So will the owners, Moxley, Houston, or Durth, like to come forward and speak in favor of the withdrawal? Same one. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? No? Anyone against? Okay. I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice of the concept plan and associated variance for Hamilton Grove off Wrightsboro Road.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion on the floor and second it. All those in favor of this withdrawal? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. You have any legal matters this evening?
Not tonight.
Do we have any staff or commissioner comments tonight? Quiet? Public comments or participation? I have a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Motion on the floor. All of us in favor of adjournment?